That's how we start down at City Hall. Ladies and gentlemen, yes. Well, are you good? Or am I getting notes up here? Yeah. Okay. So... So this should be on. Is it just on? I don't... Hey, let's do a mic test. Could you guys test those mics?
Testing, testing from at-large.
Do we have the mics on, Chris?
Test.
Hello?
Test.
Hello? Can everybody hear me?
Testing. Can you hear us okay?
How about this?
Testy, I'm extremely testy.
Oh, if Paul speaks right into the microphone? Paul speaks right, but I'm speaking right into the microphone. Can you... You can hear me? Huh? All right. Okay. Well, this is wonderful. We have what I would call a close to a full house. Thank you very much. My name is Paul Lundberg, and I'm going to moderate tonight's Housing for All Gloucester Forum for the city councillor-at-large candidate. So as kind of a... Here, we have four of the six candidates for city councillor-at-large. All six were invited, and we really appreciate your coming to talk about housing, which is a crucial issue for all of us. Let me start by saying a little bit about Housing for All Gloucester, who is sponsoring this forum and the other two that follow. We will be having a mayoral forum on Monday and a ward councillor forum next Wednesday, and it'll be the same format as we are having tonight. Housing for All Gloucester is a local coalition that's about two years old, and I would just like to read their mission and goals because I think they're very articulate and succinct. And so the mission of Housing for All Gloucester is a community organization focused on solutions to increase fair, affordable, and environmentally sustainable housing. And the goals of this group are to advocate for and pursue a range of planning and projects to increase affordable housing options, both rental and home ownership, that respond to the current economic and environmental challenges that we face. Just by way of highlighting why this is such an important subject, two weeks ago, as part of the Gloucester 400 celebration, there was a forum at City Hall of the five former mayors and the current mayor. And every one of them said in their opening remarks, and it was a forum for them to reflect upon their vision of the city, every one of them said the most important issue facing our city is housing, affordable housing and available housing for our residents. And so Housing for All Gloucester, the group that is sponsoring this, has really has taken up that cause to make this to make all of us aware of these issues. The this forum, and if you look on Gloucester for Housing for All Gloucester's website, you will see the candidates have answered a questionnaire, 12 questions specifically aimed at the question of how to about affordable housing and how to what kind of problem we have and what we can do about it. And so it is the shared goal of these candidates, so I'm going to speak a little bit for them because I was one of them for several years. It is the shared goal of the candidates and of the Housing for All Gloucester to educate the voters and the public as to this issue so that we can all make an informed decision when we go to the polls on November 7th. And so with that in mind, I'm just going to say a few ground rules. The moderator, that's me, will ask a series of questions. We have five questions. They're based on the questionnaires that these candidates have already seen and filled out. Candidates will have up to three minutes to answer. Councillor Worthley is here, so if you want to take your seat. Thank you. Now, all five of candidates who said they were going to be here. Councillor Harris said he couldn't be here tonight. The moderator will ask the questions based on the questions in the questionnaire. Candidates will have up to three minutes to answer. I may ask a follow-up question, but this is a forum and not a debate, so candidates will not be asking each other questions about their stance. This is an opportunity for candidates to express to you, the voters, how they feel about this issue. And so the way we're going to do this is we've got a random seating in order, and we will I'll ask a question one at a time, and each person will be allowed to answer the question. And then we get to the second question, the next person will start that. So everyone will have a chance to be the first answer of a question. So with that, I think we'll get started. The first question tonight is a pretty... Oh, oh, that's right, I'm sorry. There is a timekeeper over here, and the timekeeper will flash you a sign that says 30 seconds left of your three minutes, and then a stop sign. And so we know that councillors, some of the four of the five candidates before you are city councillors, and they really know how to moderate the time they speak. It's really amazing. Thank you. So with that, we will start our forum. And the first question is, do you believe that Gloucester has a housing problem? If so, who is impacted, and what do you think we can do to solve the problem? An overly broad question, but it's a good way for us to get started, and so we'll start with councillor Tony Gross. But before he answers that question, I'm going to give each candidate one minute to introduce themselves. So Tony, why don't you start with your introduction?
Hello. Paul introduced me. I'm Tony Gross. I've been a lifelong resident of Gloucester.
I can't hear you, Tommy.
Been a lifelong resident of Gloucester. Give me an extra 10 seconds back, please. I married a wonderful woman for 35 years. She's a Gloucester native also, and we raised two children here in Gloucester who went to Gloucester Public Schools. My wife went to Gloucester Public Schools. I myself went to St. Mel's and St. Peters, or those of us who are old enough to remember what St. Peters was. It was the old Fuller School. But anyway, my father ran Empire Fish Company. He was the general manager down there, and I spent my youth on the waterfront down there. And then I went to work as a commercial fisherman. As most commercial fishermen, I did other things. I went into the construction trades. I got my construction supervisor's license, and then I also got into wastewater management, and I wound up as the assistant plant manager at the wastewater plant. Now, I mention those two things because we have multiple major building projects going on, and the city council should have people there that are knowledgeable in the building trades. And with the wastewater, I think that'll be very important as we go into the secondary treatment addition. Now, could you repeat the question, please?
I'm going to let everybody else introduce themselves.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Jason, your turn, one minute.
Thank you very much. My name is Jason Groh. I'm currently an at-large city councillor. I've lived here in Gloucester for 23 years and married to my wife Sarah Groh, who many of you know is the director of advocacy at the Open Door. We have raised three daughters here in Gloucester, Matilda, Jemima, and Maisie. I don't want to forget your name, who all went to Gloucester Schools, Sawyer Medal winners, very proud of their education and their time in Gloucester Public Schools. We came here from San Francisco largely under the same circumstances that a lot of people are feeling today, which is the housing crisis. We were unable to find places to live in San Francisco or the area around there, and we were lucky enough to find our way here. We love our city. We love this community, and we do whatever we can to make it better, which is why we're here, all of us, I think. As I mentioned, I'm currently an at-large councillor. I'm the chairman of the Planning and Development Committee. So we had the... There you go. That was a fast minute.
Fast minute. Thank you, Jason. Councillor Worthley?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeff Worthley. First, I'd like to thank Paul Lundberg, former council president, for hosting this or for moderating and for Housing for All Gloucester, for putting this event together. I'm 46 years old. I live in Gloucester. I've lived here all my life. My two children, I'm a single father, my two children, Jude is a freshman at Gloucester High School and Lila is a seventh grader at O'Malley. I served in the city council 23 years ago for two terms on the Planning and Development Committee. I learned a lot then. And then I've worked my own financial service practice for the last 14 years. I do own a home in Gloucester. I'm very blessed and lucky to have done that with the help of KPN Savings Bank and our first-time homebuyers program. I'm thrilled to be here tonight. I think we've got some great candidates. All of us here are trying to do the best we can to improve our city, and obviously, housing is a big issue. So I don't want to be giving the stop sign. I think it's about that time. Thank you again.
Thank you. Councillor Gilman?
Good evening. My name is Val Gilman. I'm currently the president of the Gloucester City Council. I've been the ward four city councillor for eight years, and I've decided that I want to try to branch out so I can legislate change. I've learned a lot in my tenure. One of the things I'm proud of is that for eight years, I've served on planning and development. I chaired it for two terms. I also was in planning and development under the leadership of Paul Lundberg, which was very helpful to me in terms of learning the ropes. I love our city. My family and I moved here 54 years ago. My family, my parents, we were initially summer residents, and then about 40 years ago, we decided, my husband and I decided to make this our home. We love Gloucester. We love it here. I love the diversity. I think the diversity is second to none. We want to keep that diversity. We want to love everyone, no matter what their preferences are. We want them to love our community as I do. So thank you very much. My time is up. Thank you, Sonny.
Thank you. And Chris Sicaranza?
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Sicaranza. You might have seen my signs that say Chris D'Imicurio Sicaranza, so I have all the vowels and consonants ready for you. But in all sincerity, I had the pleasure of working in the last mayor's office, the last administration. I was the interim CAO. I have also served as the chief of staff in the city of Salem, the chief of staff in the city of Haverhill. So I come into this realm with a lot of best practices, a lot of good government, but more importantly, I want to listen to you about what your feedback is. Tonight, we're talking about an important topic, housing. It affects all of us, every single one of us. And there are different approaches that I think you'll hear tonight about the ways that we work on this. But more importantly, it takes a village for all of us to talk to each other once again. The biggest thing I'm hearing while I'm door knocking is about communications, and I just want to say thank you to the organizers again. Thank you to you at home who is watching, and thank you to this audience for participating in democracy because it is not a spectator sport. We need your help on this, and we are a better community for your feedback. So thank you all, and thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much, Chris. And I'll just introduce myself, Paul Lundberg. I served on the Gloucester City Council for three terms and one term as president, and before that, I was six years on the Gloucester Planning Board. And so I got my knowledge of housing and zoning down in the trenches. So with that, we will I'll ask the opening question again to councillor Gross, which is a big question, but do you believe that Gloucester has a housing problem? If so, who is impacted, and what do you think we can do to solve the problem? Thank you. Three minutes.
Three minutes. Wow. That's a lot in three minutes. Absolutely. I mean, you know, there's a housing problem, not just in Gloucester, but really, if you're paying any attention to the news, it's worldwide. And so, yes, absolutely, we have a housing problem, an affordable housing problem is what we have. We have... Who is it affect? Well, it affects my kid, for one, as well as an awful lot of other young people. I was talking to the young man who I sold my lobster business to who wanted my way here, and he was like, you know, "Come on." You know, he's living with his mother now. And he's like, "I'm looking around, and it's, you know, $2,000 for a dump." He said, "This is ridiculous." I mean, I know when I was in his position and his age, we could rent things that were very affordable, and that allowed us to actually get started and save some money and, you know, continue to grow. This is just not an option anymore for our young people or for our, you know, general workforce, really. It's not just about the affordable. It's the workforce housing problem. And as far as solutions go, I'm not quite, you know, it's, I guess, many aspects. One thing that I found, I went to the my wife volunteers at Wellspring, and I went to that volunteer celebration last week, and I was not aware, and I don't know if it was just my own fault, I guess, but of how much Wellspring does. Wellspring actually does an awful lot for providing housing for people in need, and they need to be celebrated, and we need to also maybe possibly follow some of their example where they are the tenant, and then they act as the agent for people who need affordable housing. That's one that's one method that we one solution that is being, but at small scale. And I think that we're going to have to take bites at this at many small scales. Now, I'd like to thank Housing for All for Gloucester. You know, they ran the forum last, no, two weeks ago, three weeks ago. I couldn't make it. There was there's been so many conflicting things that we attend lately. But these are the things that we need to do. We need to bring we need to bring the citizens together for multiple gatherings or whatever forums, to roundtable forums, to discuss and to see who are we? Are we going to just sit back and allow us allow the market forces to make us a bedroom community? Or are we going to actually do things that we need to and be have all of us make these decisions that are going to affect all of us, even though it's in individual neighborhoods? We all need to be working together to help solve this problem and not be exclusionary. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Jason, same question. You want me to say it again?
No, I got it. First off, I want to thank Housing for All for having the forum, and also, I think one of the things we have in debates is trying to figure out differences between the candidates. And unfortunately, tonight, I think you're going to hear a lot of similarity in our answers because I think all of us have a generally similar viewpoint on where the problem is. Yes, we absolutely have a problem with housing affordability in the city, housing affordability and affordable housing. And the who it's affecting, as Tony pointed out, it's our children. My three daughters, who were raised here, can't afford to live here. We have seniors who are living in homes that are far too big for them, who can't downsize. There's no place for them to go. So even if they want to change where they're living, there is no affordable opportunity for them. We are not able to attract families. If we can't bring families into Gloucester, what's happening and is happening by the data that we're already seeing is that our community is aging. It is it is becoming smaller in terms of the people that are living in homes, or more and more people are living single and two family or two people in a family, or two people in a house, excuse me. We need to figure out how we're going to regenerate our community, how to bring families in, how to keep families here. That's going to have to be done through economic development. It's going to have to be done through housing development. We have to, I think, we have to get rid of the stigma that people have about the concept of affordable housing and what that actually means. We're talking about affordable housing in Gloucester. We're not talking about base-level housing. We're talking about housing that is still pretty darn expensive, and we need to find a way to get community involvement, community understanding that affordable housing is for our kids. They're for my kids, they're for Tony's kids, they're for your kids, they're for our parents, they're for families who are coming into this community to establish their roots, and if we can't do that, the tree's going to die. It's going to it's going to age, it's going to change dramatically. I've always said that the best way to change something is to do nothing because you're going to you're going to create a situation where people can no longer afford to live here. The only people that can are going to be able to come in and buy huge houses, and you're going to you're going to redefine the entire definition of what Gloucester is and who Gloucester is. And I fear that that's probably one of our biggest challenges, is how do we get regenerated new blood, new life, keeping our kids here and allowing that population to thrive?
Thank you very much. Councillor Worthley?
Yes.
Do you need me to repeat the question?
No, you don't need to, but thank you.
Go for it.
First of all, I do agree with councillor Gross and councillor Groh. I think the problem is pretty well identified. We have an affordable housing problem. Do we have a housing problem? I don't know. I've been doing a lot of door-to-door. I've seen some mansions, and I've seen some pretty expensive condos that don't seem to have a problem finding and attracting people, but we do have an affordable housing problem. And I think how we solve the problem is multifaceted. Firstly, how we talk about the problem impacts the solution. I never want to hear someone ever say again, "Those people." Okay? Those people, those people are us. Okay? I live right outside the TOD district. I live right off of Maplewood Ave. Those people are us. Okay? So whenever we have those kinds of conversations, we need to stop that. We need to work on a program to build affordable housing specifically. Now, I worked with Habitat Humanity and helped them build four houses. I am not a contractor. I did the lumping work. I did the part that didn't involve my brain because I don't know how to build. But I helped build four houses throughout the North Shore, and it was a very rewarding experience because we also got to meet the families that moved in, and it's a real issue for those people, and the gratefulness that they had for having a place that they could afford was so moving, and we need to do more of that. The Gloucester High School used to have in the vocational program, they used to build houses, and there'd be a lottery for a Gloucester family to then be able to buy that house. But I think we need to be really thoughtful that there's two sides of this coin. We have a housing problem. We also have a housing affordability problem. We'd love to have Housing for All, but I can't imagine there's a bank in Gloucester that will give financing to all without the ability to pay for that. And how does that work? It comes back to having good jobs here that then can pay for the kinds of salaries that people can have those jobs to afford to live here. And how do we do that? Part of it's economic development. We need another variant. We need another company like that to provide thousands of jobs for people in Gloucester. We also need to work from the educational standpoint. How is it possible to have people who either graduate and go to college at a higher percentage or start a business the day they walk out or a month after they walk across that stage? We need to do more to keep local jobs that are high-paying jobs, and that will then help people who will afford to live here. The governor, I'm sorry, the lieutenant governor just announced a program today where an office has been created to assist cities and towns with leveraging federal funds for infrastructure. We should be at the table for those conversations. We're competing with 351 cities and towns, and we want to be able to get our fair share for that. I've got a lot of notes here. I want to say I don't believe in the trickle-down effect. It doesn't work. It hasn't worked for 30, 40 years that if we say, "Okay, let's have people just build more," there's no guarantee that that person who buys that house is going to be someone who needs that home. It could be that they buy a $5 million home, they're not going to leave a $4 million home in Gloucester for someone else that is affordable here. I'd like to talk to you on that again when we come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Val, you're next.
Thank you. So my value, one of my values in my brochure is seeking reasonable and well-planned affordable workforce housing initiatives so that seniors, veterans, and young families can afford to live in Gloucester. Let me explain what that means. According to Dave Holden, who oversees the Gloucester Housing Authority, he gave me some data when we were filling out this very thoughtful survey questionnaire. Thank you, Housing for All Gloucester, for coming up with that. I thought it was excellent. 305 local elderly 60 or older are on a waiting list at the Gloucester Housing Authority, 238 non-elderly disabled applicants. The rental waiting list on our Section 8 rental assistance list has 1,140 people on the waiting list. State family housing has 71 local residents. Then Ruth Pino gave me some updated information about housing stock in the real estate market. I'm sorry, this... Do I get 10 seconds to try to shoo this bug away? It's kind of annoying me. It's like a mosquito. So there's no housing stock, last I looked at this information, that's between $299,000 to $650,000. The average median price per house in Gloucester a month and a half ago when we filled out this thoughtful questionnaire was $1,592,000. And then we have our kids that are graduating from college, like my son, who's 23 years old, and he so much wants to live in Gloucester forever. He loves it here. So that's a significant problem. My background was HR. I was a 25-year HR manager and vice president of Fortune 500 company, and I get what it takes to attract, retain, and motivate people. All the businesses that I talked to in our city are so staggering right now because they just can't find help. And if they can't find help, it's mostly because there's no housing in Gloucester to live in. So this beautiful place that has wonderful industry and Gorton's and applied material, people can't live in Gloucester because there's no housing stock, and that's really a problem. So what are the solutions? I love the comprehensive plan. I think it's good because right now, we're very polarized in our views, and I think that will allow people to talk on a neutral ground, and then after that, we really need to get to work, and we need to listen to people, but we need to move forward because we need housing in Gloucester. It's so important. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. Chris, your turn.
Thanks, Paul. So you've heard it from all of us. There is an issue, but how do we tackle this in a meaningful way that we actually get solutions for the short term and for the long? Well, for the short term, what we have to do, having the pleasure of working in a few different mayor's offices, the first thing I want to tell you is what I can't do. I don't have a magic wand. I don't have a silver bullet. Nobody on this stage does either. This is an issue not just across the region, not just across the state, but the entire country. Having said that, we can learn from some best practices. You've already heard that we have wonderful data here that tells us, especially in the 400th anniversary, that we've had basically the same population for the last 100 years. But the households have changed. We have to look at duplexes and how we are incentivizing people to either rehab their single-family homes, which they have probably lived in terms of having a single residence there. We need to find better incentives to which they can make them into a multi-dwelling household. But I also want to make it clear that the council can't do anything by itself. The council can't solve this problem. We have to work in harmony with the mayor. We have to work in harmony with the governor and lieutenant governor, and we have to know our lane. I think one of the biggest things that I've heard out there, frankly, is the misinformation about what low-income housing is, what affordable housing is. You've already heard some jargon, some acronyms. What is TOD? That's Transit Orient Development. If I can't even explain to you what we're talking about, how are you welcome at the table here? We have to get back to basics. We have to talk about what our values are. And frankly, one of the conversations I'm not hearing here tonight is our seniors. Our poor seniors are going to be priced out of this community. What are we doing in terms of development for them? You know, I'm very fortuitous that I was in an environment where I was able to rehab my husband's home on Centennial Ave and make that into a two-family. Meanwhile, my mother-in-law helped my grandmother-in-law down the way. That's generational opportunity that I had. That's a privilege. Not everyone has that privilege. Not everyone has that access. To councillor Gilman's point, how are we going to embrace the diverse voices to make sure that rising tides lifts all ships? These are the policies that I'm interested in. We can talk about nuanced things, but it starts with a leader who's going to provide a vision of including you in the conversation, offering solutions such that it helps the most benefits for the most people, and making sure that your voice is heard. We can't do this alone. That's the answer. We cannot do this alone. I want to make that as abundantly as clear as possible. There is no silver bullet solution, but having these conversations with you folks showing up, with you folks at home, and having a civil conversation in such a way that we can talk about what's at stake, because frankly, I think I'm the youngest person on the stage. I'm the last probably person that bought a house here. I think I have the most to stand for that. So I'm fighting for you, and I invite you to that journey as well.
Well, thank you, Chris. That answers a perfect segue into the next question, which will go first to councillor Groh. And that question is this: When you speak to your constituents about income and housing costs, what are they saying and what conclusions do you bring from those conversations? Jason, you first.
That's a very good question. I think that the number-one thing that people say and the number-one... I think that the number-one thing that people say and the number-one thing I take away from the conversation is that people talk about how they can't afford to be here anymore. Most people talk about taxes as being the primary generator. But I think what people are really talking about is that the home that they were planning on living in for the foreseeable rest of their lives is becoming unaffordable to live in, or is becoming too big. There's no place for them to go. And, you know, I did mention that one of the biggest issues we have is with seniors and being able to stay in their community without having to stay in a house that is no longer appropriately sized for them. You're absolutely right, Chris. We have to bring people into discussion. I think we had some very, very good discussions last year when we went through the Housing Production Plan zoning amendments. I mean, we spent months talking about those issues. I don't think that, unfortunately, I don't think the results went the way that they should have gone. And I think that had they gone differently, I think we would be helping to mitigate some of the problems that we're talking about tonight. We're not going to see rampant growth in rampant development. We're going to see, what we need to see is we need to see incremental growth. We need to see infill growth. We need to see moderate growth happening on a manageable scale. And I think that's the other thing people say. They don't want to see wholesale change in their neighborhoods. They're very concerned about a dramatic change. And I think that if we look at solutions that have incremental change, that acknowledge the fact that the change is going to be taking a generation rather than five years, then people are going to feel a little bit more comfortable about accepting that kind of change. I think that everyone is afraid of or wary of a dramatic change that takes away what they think is the character of Gloucester. I think that, I've always said that evolution or change is evolutionary or revolutionary. And if it's evolutionary, you can contain it, you can modify it, you can deal with it. If you don't do that, you're going to have revolutionary change. You're going to have dramatic change. You're going to have the kind of change that people are wary of, which is whole neighborhoods changing, districts changing. I don't think anybody on this council wants that, and I think that that is a loud and clear message that comes from the public. But we do have to acknowledge that there has to be some change. If we refuse to change ever, or we don't allow change on our neighborhood, but we expect change over there, we're not going to get there. So the message is, we're wary of change, but I think the answer is, we have to think about how we're going to do that change and be thoughtful and compassionate when it need be, and aware that there's a strong sense of a place here and that we don't want to jeopardize that with just being too broad in our brushstrokes.
Thank you, Jason. Jeff, you're next.
Thank you very much. I think the question was, when I talk to my constituents, what do I hear them saying about this? When I listen to my constituents, what do we hear? I think that's a key ingredient to all public services, being a good listener. So, I'm sorry, if I could repeat that. The question was, when we talk to our constituents, what do we hear? And I think the real key piece is, when we listen to our constituents, what do we hear? And I think we hear both sides of this. People do not want to see their neighborhood destroyed, and I think that's a strong word that they use, but they also worry that their children can't find a place to live here, that they can't afford to live here any longer. I've knocked on almost 2,000 doors this year, and it's a steady theme. The other part of that is, people don't recognize Gloucester any longer. Someone asked me if I'm afraid that Gloucester's going to become gentrified. It already is. It already is gentrified. Let's not make any mistake that there's some wave coming. It is here. It is here and it's now. I'd like to not get too into a debate about what other people have said, but this is where I think it gets interesting. Counselor Grow ably chairs the Planning and Development Committee, and we did spend a lot of time on those zoning proposals. And I say this with great respect to the Housing Production Plan and the Planning Board, but the very first recommendation that came out of this, that was, the goal was to create more affordable housing, was to allow two-family by right on Eastern Point Boulevard. Eastern Point. How does a $5 million house, the average sale in Eastern Point, get split into a duplex and that second unit is somehow affordable to someone in Gloucester? And it would take away all the rights of the neighbors to have any input on what happens in their neighborhood. And the second one came, the same thing happened for downtown. When I served on the Planning and Development Committee, we passed and approved almost every single application that came through for housing and for development in different neighborhoods. But what happened is we had dialogue. That dialogue led to things that people didn't know were even problems. The neighborhood would come out in opposition to our development, and they would say, "I'm not really opposed to it, but I just don't like that the light shines in my window." Oh, the lawyer would say, or the developer would say, "We can change that. I don't like that their fence blocks my view of XYZ. I can't pull out of my driveway because of that." Oh, we can make that change. So that dialogue was exceptionally helpful to make things easier to be approved at the full council level because we had that engagement. And so anything by right skips two pieces, that there should be neighborhood input. And the second part is, there is no guarantee that that unit on Eastern Point is going to be affordable or go to a Gloucester residence. So what have we actually done? We've actually just continued the gentrification. So I think we need to be really thoughtful about whatever changes we are targeting as effective are actually effective at solving the problem. And so we need to do a better job identifying the problem, be better at listening, and make sure that the things we are doing actually help the people we're trying to help, which is Gloucester residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Val?
Thank you. So I spend a lot of time listening because I am in Planning and Development. So we get a lot of people calling us, emailing us, and what I'm hearing is, first of all, that developers are taking up all the real estate that people could use to make affordable housing, and that's a problem. That A and B are taking over affordable rental units, which is another problem. It's tough to live here because I can't afford to live here. And although their houses are more and more valuable every year, they have property taxes. And it's a problem for people that want to stay in those houses because all of a sudden they're retiring and they're not living on social security, and all of a sudden they can't afford to pay taxes. And they don't want to sell their house. So it's not an income generator. Rather, it's an issue where they're struggling with making their payments. And the things that I try to tell them is, I try to talk to them about ways that they can defer betterments and they can defer property taxes and the ways that they can use action to learn how they can get fuel assistance, things like that. But we probably don't do a good enough job making those referrals to them. And I think that's one big thing that we can do better, is taking more time with our seniors and giving them ways that they can figure out the path of how, ways that they can live here. There are things like accessory dwelling units, which I'm so proud that during my tenure, when I was chair of P and D, we were approved three dwelling units. And that was great because that's perfect for a senior couple that want to age in place. Develop a bathroom and a kitchen and over their garage or someplace, and they're able to generate some extra income to help them age in place. So I think that that is a really strong thing. And I think we've continued to try to come up with more exclusionary housing units, which is so important because that's the only way that we can get from the 8% or a little bit under in terms of where we stand to 10% that we need to be striving to get to. And it seems like we're stuck at about 17.8%, which is frustrating. We need to keep building our inclusionary housing program and making sure that we can find reasonably priced places for our seniors to live. Thanks.
Thank you. And Chris, same question?
Thank you. So everyone up here is a true public servant in that they care about this community, they care about your feedback, but we all maybe have a slightly different approach about what our values and priorities might be in that regard. To that end, I don't worry about Gloucester citizens telling me what they feel. There's a law of authenticity is the word that I use. And the beautiful thing about this city, it's been around for 400 years now. It has ebbed and flowed. It has adjusted in time, as I spoke to previously about the household size. But we come together to talk about what's at stake. And what's at stake here as to what Counselor Grow spoke to is the very fabric of who we are, our chemistry, our character. And what people are afraid of when I'm talking to them is losing that, the sense of community, our beloved community. You know, just door knocking now, I see all the Halloween decorations going up. Families are still here. They still want to have their families brought up here. I see my niece in the audience here tonight. I want to make sure that she can grow up and feel like she has a part of Gloucester within her as well, too. Going back to what we've said earlier as well, too, unfortunately, it's going to have to take some tough decisions around development, maybe zoning, but it can't be done in a vacuum. And I think one of the biggest things, Counselor Gilman, is a better dialogue about the opportunities in front of us. I think there are ways with enforcement, with the short-term rentals. I don't think we have enough support within the Inspection Services Department to actually go out there. If you pulled up on your phone right now, on a Railto.com app, you can see how many seasonal, that's inventory that otherwise we could be using for people that need it. Now, mind you, I'm also on the North of Boston CBB, the Tourism Board for the region. I think there's a harmony that we can develop. But it's the right conversations to have to set the tone. I'm sick and tired of elected officials misleading us into thinking that it's all this or all that. There's no such thing. The only thing constant in life is change. So how are we passing the baton to the next generation to be successful here? How are we making sure that a working family can bring up a family without going bankrupt? How are we making sure a senior who finds out that they have a private road suddenly needs a betterment and has to spend that money out of their pocket to succeed here? No one is doing that work, from my lens, of doing the communications about the programs that Counselor Gilman spoke to. That changes if you elect Chris Icaranza, I can promise you. I was the first ever Director of Communications for the city. Desperately need, I'm not here to point fingers at anyone, it's just I think we can do better. I think Gloucester deserves better. And by the way, our constituents absolutely deserve it. And they feel like, I will be your voice. This council does care about you, but I want to make sure that it's clear, you have to invest in people that are investing in you.
Thank you, Chris. And Tony?
Yeah, could you repeat the question? Because I sort of, I think we lost the thread of it.
So the question is, when you speak to your constituents about income and housing costs, what conclusions do you draw from those conversations? And what are people saying about those issues?
Well, we all know that, you know, the regular constituents that are non-business owners, the workers, like the young man I spoke with who bought my business, he's self-employed. He, you know, went to the bank, got his loan, bought a successful business. He's doing it successfully, can't afford to live here, makes very good money, can't afford to not live with his mother. You know, that's just one example, but it's so typical of a regular constituent. But let's talk about the business constituents who have spoken to me about this major concern that workers, they have to, they can't get workers. We can't, you know, not just business owners, but we're going to have trouble getting teachers. We're going to have trouble getting policemen, firemen. You know, we're our own constituents, too. So speaking to those people, it is imperative that we find some way, some solution that's not just affordable housing, but also workforce housing that we have got to somehow address. And just creating market-rate housing is never going to address it. That is, only each time a home gets sold, it just ratchets the price up for the next home to be sold a little higher. We've been discovered. We have to really understand that. And as has been said all across this table, we need, as a community, to come together to really discuss this. And I think Housing for All for Gloucester is a major player in this role, and I thank them for this forum, but also for all the other work because they're putting a spotlight on this and they are making us think about it and come up with ideas. It's not, everyone at this table has thought about it. There is not one person here who has ignored it or has made bad decisions about it. We all, it comes from our heart. We just want what's for the best for the city. The conclusions are, is that we really need to engage the public. And I think just having, you know, multiple roundtable discussions where we openly and honestly, with an outside facilitator, because there is so much disinformation that goes around, we really need to start from scratch and to have this conversation begin again. So I guess that's about it before I get the stop sign.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. So we're going to move on to question three, and that will go first to Jeff. So here's question three. What are the major barriers in our community for creating more affordable housing? In addition to using deed restrictions, are there other tools to overcome those barriers? And should those tools include more multifamily housing by right in all zoning districts? That's a lot to unpack, but do the best you can.
Can you just ask the third part of that question?
So should the tools that we have for creating more affordable housing, should one of those tools be including more multifamily housing by right in all zoning districts?
Okay. So the first part was, what are the barriers to building affordable housing? And I think I mentioned it earlier, is how we talk about it is a barrier. I don't think we have the right numbers all the time. We don't have the right demographic information. And then it turns to personal issues, personalities, and you hear this undercurrent of racism and classism and elitism and all these things that do nothing to help the people we want to be helping, that does nothing to move the conversation forward. So really getting clear definitions of these words that we use is probably the starting point. As far as some of the barriers, I had made a proposal to the mayor's office, and Mayor Verga actually told me he liked it, and it was to approach, and I had three meetings with them, the EDIC, Economic Development Industrial Corporation. They manage and have jurisdiction over our industrial parks. And I said, why don't we look at going up, where there are no neighbors and there's no views that will be blocked, and going up high and giving them the opportunity, the business owners there, the property owners, to build workforce housing there. I enlisted the support of Bob Gillis, who said, "It's worked in Beverly because you don't have neighborhood opposition when you don't have beautiful ocean views being blocked or any kind of views being blocked because there aren't neighbors there." And I worked really hard on that, and they have complete control over that. It went nowhere. I think we should revisit that. Okay, you're talking about, for example, the KPM Medical Center Building. On weekends and nights when people will be coming home, they're closed. So they have plenty of parking, they can go up and have access. Yes, we need to have buses and we probably have other amenities, but you could work on ways to say, how can we turn that into a community? And yes, there'll be other issues, right? Will they not like the smell that comes from Happy Valley? Maybe they will, maybe they won't, but, right? But I knew you'd get a laugh at that. I hadn't planned it, though. But, you know, there's different issues when you mix residents and businesses in an industrial park, but that could be a very lively place to bring people and say, this is an opportunity. And it's city-owned. Lots of that is city-owned property. So we have lots of ability to say, we want to see XYZ there. We'd have to work with EDIC, the Economic Development Industrial Corporation. They have sole control over it, and they said, if they approve this, they could amend their covenant, and it could be done. I'm not saying that will solve the problem, but it will certainly help. The last part of your question, should multifamily housing by right be an ingredient in the plan for addressing the affordable housing issue? I think that Gloucester's always been a very welcoming community. I think that our permitting has been, 91% of people apply for permits, get them. Yes, that creates a little bit of cost with attorneys or architectural plans, but that's not the barrier. Okay? There's so many other barriers, which we've touched on here. By right means, I don't get a notification if my neighbor turns a single-family home into a two- or three-family home. And where I grew up, there were six of us in the family. At one point, we're all in different colleges, we had six cars. So how do you say to someone, your neighbor's going to build something, it's going to turn into a family with six cars, and there's no room in the street for six cars? I'm getting the stop sign. This could be an hour-long conversation just in each candidate's ear.
Thank you, Jeff. Val, a question to you. Want me to repeat it? Are you okay?
I'm okay. Thank you. So major barriers to creating more affordable housing. I think one of the biggest barriers is a sense that people don't want to hear the facts. What they do is they embrace fake news, and then that becomes the message amongst probably the vocal minority in the community. And that just spirals into something that is almost impossible to recover from. And I think that that's one of the major issues, why we failed in... why, why we failed in 2022 with the amendments that were brought forward, not necessarily for affordable housing, but for housing stock that was reasonable, that the Planning Board brought forward. And one of the things that I supported, and a lot of people were not happy with me, at least the vocal minority, in my opinion, was that I voted in favor of multifamily by right in the R5 district. What does that mean? It means that if you're living in that house, that's your home. You're not a developer, that's your home, that you're able to increase it from two to three family, provided it meets particular criteria of satisfied sewer, conservation, parking, and you can do it by right. Okay? And I'm so sad that we weren't able to get that approved, because as Sean Henry, who is here tonight, who's a great member of the Planning Board, he kept reminding us that developers can do a knockdown and get three family. Why is it, why is it right that a person that lives there that wants to age in place can't do that? And that was a major disappointment for me. Counselor Growe supported it, and Counselor Memard did. And it was really too bad, because we had some momentum for a good reason. So we need to get rid of the fake news. I like the idea of considering multifamily by right in all of the wards, provided certain conditions applied, because as long as there's enough space and enough parking, I believe that that is a possible way that we can start creating a better housing stock for people that need workplace housing, or also need to age in place, that can't afford a mega mansion on a piece of property. So those are all things that I think we should look at going forward. And I'm excited about the comprehensive plan, because we need to just settle down all the polarization right now, and Sunny saying, I must stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Val. Chris?
Thank you. You've heard it across us already. Ignorance is the answer to the question of the major barrier. How do you eliminate ignorance? Welcome people into a conversation where they are welcome, where they are heard, and they feel like we are working towards something that can help the greatest majority. You just heard the council president speak to the fact that there was a matter that came up to the council, and it did not pass. Now, I can share with you, having the pleasure of being the Chief of Staff in other cities, you know, I'm less worried about parking, because if we remove that barrier, we need to debate a transit system that actually works. We still have a ways to go with the M B T A, but we want to make sure that we're actually encouraging people to use their bikes, actually encouraging people to use alternative means of transportation. Now, that's a vision for younger folks. As we just spoke of earlier, this is an aging community, so that might not necessarily be true of every scenario. Having said that, it is obvious to me, if you look at the history of Gloucester, we were a community of multi-dwelling units. That's a fact, folks. You can't debate the facts. What the Housing For All Group has, has provided facts, not Facebook posts, not misinformation and secret groups, not secret squirrel texts. We have to get back to a dialogue. What you've heard from all of us tonight is enough of the misinformation and the ignorance. There's nothing to be celebrated. I am totally embarrassed by it. You should be, too. You're being misled. Are you getting the best for your buck when a city official misleads you about what's on agenda for the evening? Consider that for a moment, please. Because the reality is, for my generation and younger, we will be inheriting whatever you leave behind for us. And doing not is the current game plan. That is totally unacceptable. Unacceptable. And again, as a person that has just bought a house and made sure that there was another unit there, so I can afford to live here just to get there, I think that there is a truth amongst a more silent majority out there of nots. The haves are doing just fine here in Gloucester. We will become Newburyport. We will become another community that's been priced out. I worry about that tremendously. So you have to make sure that when you're talking about the major barriers, you start with communications, setting the right tone. And I think that we should be looking at the multi-housing ordinances. There's a few different options out there. I'm probably a little bit more radical in that I think about transportation. Haverhill, we waived that. We waived the, the parking. So I'm interested in getting people to live in a healthy and safe household and not being on the streets. People are closer to poverty than you realize, and you should give a damn about them.
Thank you, Chris. Tony, over to you.
Well, could you repeat the first piece about that, the major barriers?
Sure. What, what?
Repeat the first, the bit, the?
What are the major barriers in our community to, in creating more affordable housing?
Okay, that's, that's good. That's all I needed, was that. Because I didn't write the rest of it down. Sorry. Well, the major, I mean, money. It's a major barrier for creating affordable, for us having affordable housing. It's, it's, we've been priced out. But one thing that we're not talking about, and we talked about, was mentioned Varian and things, but Gloucester's evolving. Gloucester, for 400 years, was a fishing, you know, we relied on the Atlantic Ocean to bring us the majority of our bounty. And that is no longer the case. And we have to understand that how that also affects this piece, because it affects it a whole lot, because we have removed that entire workforce out of our economy. And that's a big problem for us. And until we figure out where we're going with that, this is also a piece of this housing issue. You talked about deed restriction or, or other solutions. I think that the, the Affordable Housing Trust needs to be, have other funding sources. We need to work on how we can figure out how to get more money into the Affordable Housing Trust, so that the city could, in the future, possibly purchase land or buildings, and then permit them, and then hire a contractor, or, or put it out for bid for a contractor to come in and build deed-restricted housing in that. So that's combining the two. You use the Affordable Housing Trust to, to do it, and we have to figure out a way to get funding into that Affordable Housing Trust. It's not enough, the 3% impact fee from the, whatever, right now, it's up to four, over 400 short-term rentals, up from 350 when I first introduced it less than a year ago. So that's, you know, 50 more. So do the math about the percentage on how many of those are coming in the last year. That's the only data point you really need. And the multi-housing, multifamily housing, yes, I think we should. But if we allow it again, for multifamily housing to be built without any guardrails as far as affordability, they will just be built and condoed into basically non-affordable housing again. So before we unleash that, we need to think about what, how can we control that development, so that it actually becomes a tool in our toolbox? So I think that we should, we, that's, that's the major piece of having the multifamily issue, is that we have to try to make sure that it's affordable also. And inclusionary zoning doesn't, doesn't affect, you know, it's after six units, correct? Yeah. So, you know, a multifamily house up to five units, you don't have an inclusionary unit in that. So we need to figure out, we need, there's a lot more work that needs to be done, and we need to bring the community in on this conversation.
Thank you, Tony. Jason?
I'm going to steal a line from our Lieutenant Governor, Kim Driscoll, who said that everybody loves affordable housing until it has an address. And she's, she's dead right. And I'm going to, I'm going to reiterate some of the comments that have happened here. Education, ignorance, money, these are all massive barriers. You know, I, I take a little issue about the Housing Production Plan recommendations being, being shot down by the council, because that was a, that was a plan that was developed over several years via public input. It was literally meetings of people saying, what do you need? What do you want? What should we do? And we're, we're engaging that process now with the, with the Comprehensive Planning Initiative, which I think is great. And if you haven't watched the first episode of the report that the, the consultant has done for the Planning Board, take a look. It's October 5th. It's all, it's all on tape. You can watch it. It's about an hour long. It, it reiterates a lot of what we know in terms of, of facts and figures, but it really begins the process of, of paring away and getting to the factual information, the data, the information that is going to help us actually make decisions. You, you know, I think every neighborhood in Gloucester bears some responsibility for dealing with the housing crisis. And I think that if we, we, if we cut any, any neighborhood, Eastern Point included, frankly, we are saying to one group of people, you are here to bear the responsibility of housing, you get a pass. And I don't think that we have that luxury in this community. We may not be building affordable housing in Eastern Point. That may not be the issue that we're talking about. Affordable housing is part of an equation, housing in general. We need to be looking at housing construction and development across the scale of housing. And, you know, we're always going to get rich houses, you know, wealthy built houses, expensive houses. But we, we cannot ignore the fact that we're going to have housing on all levels. The, I, I do hear one thing from people, and they always say, well, we should just put a moratorium on anything but affordable housing. Awesome. Great idea. No one is going to do that, because affordable housing is expensive to build, because it's just the same expense as regular housing is to build, because it's the same housing. But if, we do need to engage organizations like Harborlight and Habitat for Humanity to, to begin to help us with the areas where we can engage public funding. And we talked to the mayor's office, and the mayor's office is working on looking at areas of the city that are owned by the city that can be used to develop property using partners. But it's not going to be something the city's going to be building. It's going to be using, utilizing partners to develop the housing. And we will have a little bit more control over the amount of affordable housing that goes into a project like that.
Hey, you guys are making my job easier, because that's a great segue into the next question. And Counselor Gilman, you're going to get the next question. No. Because I'm going to, the first part of the question is a hardball, and the second part's a softball. Here's the first part. What is your understanding of the positives and negatives of the state-mandated M B T A transportation-oriented district zoning requirements? And then the second part, the softball part, is will the current exercise of updating the city's master plan using the Comprehensive Planning Initiative help with the implementation of those requirements? So Counselor Gilman, you get to go first.
Sorry. You can do the softball part first, if you want.
The pressure is on being first. Your understanding of the state-mandated M B T A zoning requirement? It is a requirement. Section 3A of M G L, Chapter 40, is here. And as of August 2023, 176 of 177 municipalities are in compliance. The Attorney General made it very clear that the law is binding, and it's not optional. Cities and towns that don't comply could be sued, and failure to rezone could also be a violation of the Fair Housing Law. That is why Mayor Verger submitted the guidelines, the documents, when he needed to. The town of Holden, right now, which has 20,000 people, which is a little bit smaller than us, is refusing to comply, and was sued by the Central Mass Housing Alliance, along with a local low, low-income family. And the suit names, the Select Board, could be City Council, if we didn't comply with this, Town and Town Manager. And the failure to comply will lead to loss of grants, like Mass Works, which was a huge grant that we needed when we did all the, the stuff on Trask Road up with in Gloucester Crossing. I think we had $3 million that we were given as a grant that we needed to do a lot of sewer work. We wouldn't have been able to do that if we didn't have that grant. So as leaders, what we need to do is we need to listen to the public, and we need to work together to solve the housing crisis in the city. And one more thing I'd like to say, they're also penalizing housing authorities and not giving them any subsidy, which would be a huge issue for Gloucester with all the housing authorities that we have. So we have to stay on track. How will the master plan help with the implementation? The comprehensive plan and the master plan is just going to calm all this anger and all this misinformation. So I think it's perfect time for us to pause and listen to what people are saying, and make sure that they understand what the heck this all means. They need accurate, true facts in order to be able to want to move forward. And so far, we've been given facts that are, that are absolutely untrue, and by people saying that if you're, if you're going to develop a one-bedroom apartment, you can have eight people in that room. Where our health, our inspection department in Gloucester is clear, it can only be two. And those numbers equate a lot of fear in this. And I'm looking forward to the comprehensive plan. Thank you for letting me have 10 seconds more.
Thank you, Val. Chris, your turn.
Thank you. Yeah, to echo the council president, you know, there are people that have tried to sit down with me to say, they've done their own research relative to the transit-oriented development, the M B T A plans, and they largely go back to legalese. They go back to lawyers and lawsuits. I'm not interested in lawsuits. I'm sick and tired of Gloucester being in the headlines for the wrong reasons. I'm sick and tired of us fighting one another. And the reality is, it's the law of the land, folks. So either get on board with it, or we have more problems and more lawsuits. So on that part of the piece, I can't agree with Val enough. Having said that, though, on the second softball part of that, you know, I could think of a very prominent member of the D P W who said, we do a lot of great plans, we have a lot of great consultants, but they collect dust. And I think it's our obligation to activate those plans. It's our obligation to communicate what's at stake. And furthermore, I think that there are ways that we can celebrate that authentic Gloucester character to that end as well, too. You know, we have a beautiful working waterfront. I don't think there's enough conversations about regionalized approaches to transportation. You know, having the pleasure of working with Salem and Beverly, there's a strong interest of looking at our waterfront. We are at the Bay State. We should be looking at ways so that we're not looking at dilapidated M B T A railroads. We should be getting more creative with our transportation. That's something I very much want to look into. So it's not just about having a plan, it's not just having compliance, it's about having a vision, as you've heard from all of us tonight, that works in harmony with what's at stake, that works in tandem with the Lieutenant Governor's vision, especially as the former mayor of Salem, and now the Lieutenant Governor, she's leading on this. And it's true. This is absolutely true. To be clear, they're putting out the guidance from the state to municipalities. They will not accept anybody that's not in compliance. So that's a non-starter, folks. Let's not let people tell us, oh, no, there's a way around that. That is totally untrue. That's an unfair statement. And you need leaders who are going to be up here that are going to tell you the, not just a convenient truth, not just a Facebook post, an actual hard truth. That's a hard truth. So I don't think plans are developed such that they have to collect dust. I think they have to be activated. I think the exercise of everything we're talking about is very worthy, but I do worry about those that don't speak English. I do worry about those that are vulnerable, those that don't have access to technology, if they want to chime in. So it's our obligation, especially as elected officials, to go out and listen to you and to bring that feedback back. So to that end, making sure that you have elected officials that are committed to all people, not just, especially those that are vulnerable. You know, those people that are using the M B T A are very likely middle-class or not of the greatest means. So let's think about them, about the ways that we're affecting their lives when it comes to these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony?
So what do I understand about the pluses and minuses of the T O D? Well, they, they lessened a little bit when they put out their final guidelines. I think they made one change that, oh, no, they made two changes that were significant. And I don't know why they, why they got missed in the first time around, because they're pretty... And I don't know why they got missed in the first time around because they're pretty evident and obvious. One is that they added you could have mixed use was in compliance. And then they also said if you have existing, inclusionary language, you could do that. Inclusionary language for those means that if you have six units or more, you have to add one, and then as you get up to 10, then it's a percentage of your units. And there's a formula that goes into that, but I won't go into that. But it just means that you have to have an affordable unit in the larger developments. A big minus, and it's been spoken about here about, you know, using bikes and, I mean, when I was much younger, and bike was my major mode of transportation, but every time I got on it, I would say to whoever I was leaving it, well, I'm running the gauntlet again because Gloucester was not made up for bikes. You know, we can paint a track in the road, but when the road's barely wide enough for two cars, it's not going to have a lot of room for bikes. But, you know, did I mention unreliable public transportation as far as the, you know, the MBTA has not been the most reliable source for our workers who try to get up the line to go to work. But also, you've got to remember, they have to get from where that destination is to their employment. And how do they get there? If they have to take an Uber or a taxicab, this is an added burden on people that don't have the financial wherewithal. So we need to think about these things. These are real problems that we need to think about. The areas around the train station, which is in most areas, is in the downtown, more heavily densely populated areas that have the people with the most needs usually. It excludes senior housing. So we can't have credit for any, and you know, we've been talking about seniors a lot tonight. Seniors are a very vulnerable part of our population for housing. To not include that, I understand they want it for families, but to not include, to at least give some credit to the cities who have done a decent job like Gloucester has, that's another one of the minuses. We also, I asked, you know, during the ARPA, I had requested that maybe we do a parking study around where the TOD area would be so we know how many cars are there. What is the situation? I live downtown, my wife and I live downtown, we have two kids. And you would come home and you would just, I would, maybe not you, but be aggravated at my neighbor for parking in my spot. Now, it's his spot, too, or her spot, but it's just, it's a quality of life issue. We have to remember that parking is a big issue.
Thank you. And Jason?
I am not going to park in your spot. Okay, as Chris said, the MBTA, the Mass General Law 3A is the law, okay? And the consequences are real. We will face sanctions that will be detrimental to this community. So I think the first thing that we need to understand is that while this is coming down from the state, and I explain to people, you know, these things don't happen because someone just woke up one day and said, let's impose regulations on our communities. It happens because communities avoid doing what they need to be doing. They avoid the hard work that needs to get done to keep their communities healthy, and this is a response to that. But this is all in our control. This is a positive. Everyone thinks that the state is going to come down and tell us what we can and cannot do. We have the wherewithal and we have the control to develop the TOD in the manner that best suits Gloucester. And I think that's one of the things that people forget about. There is no requirement to build any units. This is not about housing production. It's about really forcing communities to take a hard look at what they have and what is potential and to find out where that balance creates something that they can create and live with. And, you know, it's complex and simple at the same time. I think that people overthink the 3A legislation and the language, but it really is about requiring the community to sort of come to terms with how are we going to address this issue and what would be the optimum solution for our community in that regards. I think the CPI is going to do a great job at helping to inform that decision. But I think that we don't have the luxury of waiting to get started on this work. I'm really hoping that the mayor puts forward a working group on the 3A specifically very early in the next term because while the CPI is going through, it is a global look at the community and will help inform through data and input, the 3A has to get done by the end of next year. We don't have the option of delaying that. The CPI is a little bit more flexible and is much more about sort of long-term vision. We need to combine that long-term vision discussions and those roundtables with the chore of actually putting together some solid, concrete plans of what we would do and how we would comply with 3A. And I think that, you know, the community input on this is going to be absolutely critical. But as Tony pointed out, there are some flexibility in this now with mixed use that certainly is much more compatible with the train station area. And I'm looking forward to getting the kind of input and crafting by right work. The thing about by right is that it is not free for all. By right still has to maintain very strict rules and regulations about what that property does. And until we define what that is, there's no by right. By right comes from us defining what that is and what we find is acceptable. And that's going to be the job.
Thank you. Jason, Jeff?
Thank you. I'd like to spend maybe 30 seconds going back to an answer that came from the last question, and I have a great respect for everybody on the stage, the table here. Counselor Gilman, you referred to the fake news and only having facts, and I think that's critically important, but I also don't think that any one of us should be the judge of what is a fact until it's been verified. So you said that the proposal that got shot down last time was for three-family by right downtown. And it had to be only, it could only work if it was owned by a homeowner to convert to three-family. That simply was not in the language at all. It's completely not true. Anybody could have bought a building and converted to three-family whether they live there or not. That's fake news if we say that's otherwise, okay? When I started doing some real advocacy, started to try to do some advocacy for our homeless population, Counselor Gilman called me and said I should be thanking her for taking my interview off of 1623 Studios because I said, there's 100 people living in the woods. And she said, okay? Well, you said there is nobody living in the woods. And you walk your trail, you said there's nobody living in the woods.
Counselor Worthley, I said at the early, we're not going to, this is not a debate. So whatever Counselor Gilman said stands on its own, please just go forward on your own.
Fair enough. I just think we should be considering the facts cannot be interpreted by any one of us. We need to have some way of really identifying these things. So the three-family by right wasn't just homeowner-built. It could be anybody could buy a place and convert it to three-family. And that didn't pass. Okay, to the MBTA and TOD, there are some things that are really good about this. It's forcing a conversation that we have to have about providing more housing. I don't have a lot of confidence in the MBTA. I don't know if anybody here could argue that one. We have gates that fall on top of people and top of cars. We can't get the MBTA to be working to the standard. We need to say to people, you're going to move here and not have a car because you can rely on transportation that is unreliable, isn't fair to those people. It's also not fair that our government is saying, if you don't comply, provide more housing for people who need it, we're going to take away programs that help people, our most vulnerable population, we impacted negatively by the state that wants us to help these people. So it's really not fair to say, if you don't comply, you will be punished. And Counselor Gross mentioned that there's been two changes since the first rendition of this came out. There's actually a third one, which is if you have a busing, I think it's tied into the multi-family, I'm sorry, multi-use, if you have a way of busing people to the train station, those areas could also count. So I think that we do need to have a dialogue with the state and propose things that work for Gloucester that might also comply if they haven't been considered already. For example, I'm running out of time here. Whenever that thing goes up, my brain shifts to 30 seconds. I'm sorry. So right now, we have this mandate. I accept it as a mandate, but it's already changed three times since they put the mandate out. Are there other changes that could be considered to allow for other parts of the city being, for example, we have two MBTA stations. Are we talking about West Gloucester as a station as well as a way to provide some affordable housing? Sorry, I had to rush to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're down to the last question, and Chris, you get to answer it first. And the last question is, can we advance our community goals for protecting the environment and increasing clean energy through our housing initiatives?
So if you think about some of the policy areas we're talking about tonight, you heard about workforce economics, making sure that we have a good employer here. But the trickle-down of that, as we know, are, you hear people when they work in the service industry, the retail industry, the restaurant industry, that they can't find quality people to be keeping things sustainable. That's because we don't have a major employer making sure that there's a good workforce for them to live here. So with regards to environmental issues, you know, sustainable housing, energy efficiency, these green building codes, you've heard about stretch codes, that's obviously going to be helping to protect the environment. I also believe that when we talk about some of these policies relative to the state, talking about getting rid of gas stoves, I worry about our seniors being able to afford that. So I think, look, I have a Prius and a Tesla. I am all about green and clean, trust me. But I also know there's practicalities that come with that. I have to plug in the car. I have to make sure that it's going to be efficient when I plug in the car. So when we think about these considerations, it's all well and good to have environmental justice, but I also want us to think about, you know, transit, as we talked about, workforce development, economic sustainability, again, racial justice and diversity. These are all parts of housing that are part of a multifaceted portfolio that, about housing, it's not just a singular issue of the cost, where we put it. It's about everything else that comes with it. And I think relative to green initiatives, I think, you know, we've seen the Mass Save program. I helped to do the Gloucester Green Program to promote the efficiencies under the last administration to make sure that the seniors and middle-class folks could actually have the chance to modernize their homes with cost-free incentives. Those are the programs that I think we should be looking into, the Mass Save type programs. I'm not a fan of creating ordinances that dictate that you must do something that's going to hurt your bottom line. I'm just, I think people are struggling enough right now, frankly. And I think it's a tough time to ask people to do additional work relative to green initiatives that are going to frankly hurt their bottom line. You know, they're worrying about getting food on the table right now. And I think asking them to suddenly get rid of their gas stove is a tough thing to do. Having said that, I think there are practical ways to which you can advance those types of codes and regulations. You evolve on it in such a way that you can test it out in certain populations, but you don't necessarily mandate it. There's a common sense way to get the good that you need from that. But I don't want to just talk about environmental justice. I want to talk about racial justice. I want to talk about all the other things that come with that, too. So I challenge my other compatriots up here to think about those, never mind what the moderator said.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Excuse me. Tony, you're next.
Yes, as Chris just mentioned, he got to go first, so he got to grab all the good little sayings. But anyway. Sorry, Chris. Mass Save, you know, I actually, before I figured out that it was going to be too great a commitment between other things, is I went to become a heat coach. And that's a great thing where people go in and they help people, it's free. You go in, we have a sustainability coordinator now, just put a heat coach on, we just got a grant that allows us to fund a heat coach, who goes in and tells people, this is what we can do. We can do what everybody commonly known as mini-splits, their heat pumps, and they can greatly reduce some of the energy use that goes into that home. Of course, there is an upfront cost, but Mass Save can mitigate some of that through grants, and that's an excellent program. Chris is absolutely right. We need to talk about the racial and social justice. One thing I'd like to discuss, though, is the average median income. Gloucester has lumped into the greater Boston area, which at many times is about $30,000 higher than what ours is. Last week, I spoke with Congressman Molton's office about, because this is a HUD, Housing and Urban Development program that we're plugged into, that's their formula, that can we just make some adjustments to allow communities like Gloucester that are not as well-off as far as their average median income to lower it down so that it does not affect the market rate rents? Because yes, it's all well and good on the inclusionary and on the Section 8, the landlord gets that higher rent, but even in the inclusionary, like Halyard, there's 30 units up there. Started out, you know, at above-market rate, and that was the affordable. And because we're locked into greater Boston, it's a big problem. So right now, and I've talked to the administration, they're on board with these discussions. It's in Molton's office. They said, all right, it's in our court now. We'll go talk to HUD. So I just wanted to let everybody know that those discussions are happening about the AMI. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Can we just, for my own edification, repeat the question?
Sure. Can we advance our community goals regarding protecting the environment and increasing clean and efficient energy through our housing initiatives?
I don't know, to be honest with you. I mean, I love the idea that we can dictate whether or not we use green energy or solar or electrical, whatever. I mean, solar, 30 years ago, who had solar panels on their house? Nobody. These things develop over time because it becomes obviously more practical and you can develop your technology to adapt and become cheaper. And, you know, ultimately, this stuff becomes about the bottom line for developers and people who are building houses. But I think that Tony is on to something in terms of the AMI, which he's absolutely right. I mean, a good percentage of Gloucester qualifies for affordable housing, all right? That's just a simple, simple truth. Our income doesn't rise to the level that we are, that this is somehow some secondary group of people. Most of us qualify for this. If we adjust the AMI to a level that's more appropriate to us, that would change and the qualifications would go down. I'm going to have lost my thought there a little bit. But Mass Save, you know, these are private and public partnerships that do a great job. But I don't think that, you know, we had, we tried, Counselor Worthley tried to put through an ordinance that required the city to look at energy efficiency. Well, that's great, and I think a lot of us agree with that sentiment. It didn't have any teeth, unfortunately. It didn't require the city to do anything. It becomes very difficult at that point because it drives costs up. And I think that if we're looking at trying to develop affordable housing and housing that's affordable, that if we then layer on additional requirements that increase the cost of those projects beyond the natural desire to keep those project costs down, I think you're going to inhibit the development of that kind of housing. I think you're going to get it on the higher end, but you're going to develop, you're going to have inhibited development on the lower end that we really need. That's pretty much, I think, it for me.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. I'd like to just correct one thing that Counselor Gross said. He said that I tried to put forward a renewable energy ordinance. It passed. It passed six to three. And so I just want to be clear. But it's okay. And it wasn't requiring residents and businesses to do anything differently. This was require the city to say that when we are looking at a new project, for example, the new school on Webster Street, it's solar-ready, but there are no solar panels on it. For two years, that, even though it has been open for two years, that roof could have been getting energy and saving the city money. The turnaround time on renewable energy, at least for solar panels, is five and a half years. We've been in this business for 400 years. I like to think we're going to be round enough to see that return on investment. So I was pleased to see that happen. And the reason why I wanted to push that and worked on it for about a year is the state has what's called a stretch code, and the stretch code is being adopted by many communities throughout the Commonwealth. And when you adopt it, you are maintaining your green community standards. And it does impact the cost of housing and businesses. If we were to adopt that, I can hear, I used to work for the Chamber of Commerce, I can hear them saying, well, if the city of Gloucester doesn't have its own solar panels or renewable energy, why would you require businesses to do it? Why would you require residents to do it? So I thought, okay, the least we can do is actually save taxpayers' money in the long run by making sure the city keeps that standard high. And so I was very pleased to see that pass. And I want to thank the Clean Energy Commission for their input on that. The question was, can we advance our goals on environmental protection and green energy at the same time advancing our goals with housing? And that is a challenge. Years ago, we changed the zoning, 20 years ago, we changed the zoning to increase lot sizes so that you'd have to have in some places 80,000 square feet to build a single-family home. We should probably revisit that because when you have to buy a property that is 80,000 square feet, you have to build a big house to justify the financing to afford that land. How are we going to build tiny homes, small homes, that would actually be more appropriate for people who can't afford big mansions? How do you do that on 80,000-square-foot lots? You can't justify that financially. So we So, we probably need to look at, how do we look at the whole city and say, "Are there places and pockets where we can say," and we can't be spot zoning, but say, "Can we reduce the lot sizes to allow for smaller homes?" That is probably going to be, and if anything, that was the biggest driver locally in driving up costs of housing. In some places, we just changed this, to convert a property in Lanesville, for example, you need 8,000 square feet, 80,000 square feet, but to convert it to two-family, you needed double that to convert it, which made no sense. We changed that. But still, 80,000 is a big, 80,000 square feet is a lot of land to need to build a house. So, you're in a building mansions, and can we get to protect the environment more by having very specific places where we can say, "Smaller homes, smaller lot sizes." I think that might be the answer to get to that. Last question asked about the plan, we'll come back to that.
Okay, thank you. And then, Val, got the last, answer to the last question.
Can I still call you counselor? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. So, one of my values is staying true to environmental needs while aligning solutions with city ordinances. Staying true to climate and environmental needs while aligning solutions with city ordinances. Hearing this question, if I were to need to get some more of these right now, I probably would have changed that a little bit because I think the words that are missing are seeking reasonable and well-planned into that. Because doing things requires you to sit back and say, "Is that smart or not? Is it affordable or not? Where is that going to bring us?" It really requires a lot more thought. And so, I think it's important that we pause on some of those ideas. One of the things that I'm hoping to do if I get elected as one of four at-large counselors is I want to legislate more. I've been in the trenches as a ward counselor, loving it, but for eight years, and I'm ready to be a thinker. I love doing best practices. So, some of the things that really make me excited is spending more time looking to see what other municipalities are doing that's progressive in all these areas of climate and environmental needs. And then, using our boards and commissions more. We have a terrific Clean Energy Commission, which is an untapped resource because we have silos between us. And we have the prerogative as a city councilor to have group meetings. And now that COVID is over, thank God, we're able to have some meetings back in person, which is so exciting because we miss that dialogue between silos, and we can learn more from them because clearly they're experts in what they do. Planning board as well. So, my thought right now is I'd like to see what other municipalities are doing and how we can learn best practices from them, and then tap into the resources that we have here in Gloucester as well and get the dialogue going because I think we can do better than we have, and I think we need to keep moving forward. So, thank you.
So, thank you. You know, one of the takeaways that I had hoped for and that Housing for All Gloucester had hoped for was that these candidates could show you and the voters what thought they've given to housing, and I think their answers have been quite incredible. Thank you so much for your thoughtfulness on all five of you, and thank you to Housing for All Gloucester for providing this forum for that. So, applause for everyone. Now, councilors, can I have a motion to adjourn? Seconded? All those, okay, we're adjourned. Thank you so much.